Education meeting. At this time, may I have a motion to enter executive session to discuss confidential matters pertaining to the employment and future employment of particular persons or person?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion on that? All in favor? Thank you, we're now in executive session. Alright, thanks for being patient. At this time, can I have a motion to return to open session, please?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion on that? All in favor? Opposed? Thank you. At this time, we'll have the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, ungodly, indivisible, with liberty, justice, and Thank you very much. Okay. There are no agenda modifications, so may I have a a motion to adopt the tonight's agenda, please?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion on that? All in favor? Opposed? Thank you. And that brings us to Pride. Wow, we got a lot of pride.
James, do you want to kick us off?
Sure, yeah. Well, last Friday, our varsity football team won their game against Poughkeepsie. It's a pretty great way to start the season. And this past week, our FDR Boys Soccer Team, both JV and varsity teams, played against Poughkeepsie, and they both won. So that's pretty great, too. And next week, we have our Spirit Week and Homecoming Game and Dance at the end of the week. And I've spoken with some of the student government officers, and they seem to be pretty organized on how early homecoming is.
It is early, yes.
I think it's going to go well, so I'm pretty excited about it.
Cool.
Great, thank you. We have a couple of things. It's my pleasure to announce that we have three people in our district who are recipients for the Mid-Hudson School Study Council Awards for Excellence. One is not with the board anymore, but Kevin Sheehan, a former board member and past president on a number of occasions. He will, he is a recipient for excellence in Board of Education service. Heather Dennis, the Director of Special Education. Received the award for excellence in administration. And Donna Oles, over in Transportation, won the awards for excellence in support staff services. So we are very pleased that they were selected. It's competitive. Multiple people throughout the district worked on this project, certainly Aviva, Debbie, Linda. Several board members helped with the nomination for their fellow board member, Kevin. The event is in October, we'll be discussing that later on because it happens to fall on the same evening as a board meeting, but we'll be discussing that later. Donna Oles was also a person on our opening day. I'll get the list. Each year, for the last couple of years, we started to recognize people with 25 years of service. And then I realized, well, we've been doing that for a couple of years, so some of these people must be at least at 30. And so on opening day, we had four people receive a 25-year PIN. And that was Anne Anne Garola. She changed her last name this summer, so that's why I'm not quite confident. But she's a fifth-grade teacher at Netherwood Elementary. Catherine Ballard, the guidance counselor at FDR, got a 25-year PIN. And Philip Pacio, in Transportation, got a 25-year PIN. And Dennis Tompkins at Havlin Middle School Custodian received a 25-year PIN. So new this year, so Donna Oles, who I mentioned before, who's got the award, also received one of these, and I'll read the list. New this year, we gave stars thanking you for 30 years of service. And on the list, we had people who ranged from 30 years all the way up to 36 years. So there are one, two, 16 people in the district with 30-plus years of service, so I think it's worthwhile to read their names out loud. Pamela Atkins, Guidance Counselor, FDR. Elizabeth Connell, third-grade teacher, Ralph R. Smith. Ann Daly, student assistance records at FDR. Mara Doughty, teaching assistant, North Park Elementary. Robert Knox, music teacher, North Park Elementary. Carol Mitchy, second-grade teacher, Ralph R. Smith. Donna Oles, bus driver and office assistant in the Transportation Department. Michael Oles, her husband. So they've been both working in the district for 30 years, head auto mechanic in Transportation. Felicia Olson, fourth-grade teacher, North Park Elementary. Joanne Peterson, laws teacher at Havlin Middle School. She had the highest, 36 years. Margaret Catani, third-grade teacher, Violet Avenue. Margaret Roble, PE teacher at North Park. Cynthia Simeone, special education teacher, FDR. Mary Pat Sternberg, fifth-grade teacher, Ralph R. Smith. Lucinda Cicado, part-time bus driver, Transportation. And Joanne Wood, fifth-grade teacher, Violet Avenue. So it is, we did this on opening day, we called them up and we handed them their paperweight thanking them for 30 years of service. And speaking of opening day, we had quite the performance from the First Ladies, who sang the National Anthem, and the jazz band performed two numbers. So we had a great opening day. We received one other piece of really exciting news. A former student, Amy Van Nostrand, who participated in our theater, both the drama and the musical theater program, went on to pursue a career in theater. And she will be in the Broadway show, a real Broadway show, called Holiday Inn. So we are, she has continued to support our theater program, coming back and helping our students since she graduated. We typically send at least a group of students down to see a Broadway show, so you can be sure that we'll send them to see one of our very own who made it to Broadway. And so we are just really excited about that.
Okay, anybody else have any any pride? That they want to, alright. Move on to the superintendent's report?
Yes. I don't have anything, we can move right on to opening of school, because that's the report, basically, that I have.
Alright.
So before You about said?
It was a big day.
It was a big day. And before we get to what today was actually like, on our opening staff day, the Operations Department, which is, which are a whole group of us, Linda, George Treadwell, Food Services, the Business Office, Personnel, Technology, so all the support systems. One, at one of our meetings, they put together a presentation, because opening of school doesn't happen without a tremendous amount of work over the summer. And Linda and Elliot decided to celebrate that and put together a short video. So Linda, can you show our, and we showed this to the staff, the support staff, on opening day?
I do have to say, Elliot is the one that put the slideshow together and the music. I just took some photos. I don't want to take all the credit.
You were his partner in crime, you drove all over with him.
Don't give him a big head of the ear.
No, he's not.
Alright, alright.
It's too late.
Summer vacation.
Okay. We have a board discussion, discussion item on board goals, which I've been, as long as I've been on the board, which is a long time, been little un, they're not what I've said they are. They're really district goals. They're part of the board, uh, district goals are included in, in our board goals. So, um, what I'd like to do is look at the last year's board goals. It's not that we have to set the goals, um, tonight, but to get an idea of whether or not, I'd kinda like to discuss whether or not we really actually, the goals that we set were really, I don't know, did everybody watch the webinar? It was really, really interesting, it was an hour and a half, but the, it, it, there's a lot of stuff that they, that the, the School Board Association recommends that, that are done for board goals that we never do. So, I'd like to kinda go through these and perhaps if you could get a few minutes, even just to look at the beginning of the, of the webinar so that we could come back and then, have more focused and, and when you look at it, you'll find out there are goals and there are objectives. And we've kinda squashed together goals and objectives in, in this thing and, I was thinking we should really have some kind of a, a longer discussion where we discuss what, goals are and what objectives are and who does what. As it turns out, the district goals should be done by superintendent along with the board. And then the action required from that, those goals are called objectives is what your job is, which actually you've been doing. So, um, I just think the whole process could be better. And maybe if it's a little painful this year, we could get it set better so that in the future we'll go quicker. And I make that, that makes sense? Anyway. So, we, we have-
One que- I mean, are, are, is there perhaps a better environment to try to do this in? Is it something that perhaps we shouldn't look at doing at a workshop?
If you happen to look at the webinar, they talk about, uh, board workshops. Many boards have a workshop meeting and a business meeting. And a workshop, um, meeting would be discussing goals like that, uh, having presentations. And a business meeting is, uh, ba- basically our consent agenda, really. So, I, I, at this point, I don't, I'm not recommending we change the format of, uh, thing, but we might think about when there's a specific thing like getting board goals and, and getting them right, that we have that one of the meetings be in a format, in a workshop format.
Well, I guess that's what I'm saying is, should we look at, I mean, we can, we can attempt to, to muddle through them at this point, but-
That's what I, I think the answer to the question is yes. That's what I'm, I was trying to get to, but I'm not doing a good job here. But, uh, yes.
Okay.
That's why I didn't, you know, I thought maybe if we just read off the, the goal, those we had and, and looked at it more carefully as to what, is that really a, a goal or is that an objective? An objective is the, um, commission of what the goal asks. So, in many, in many districts, a goal is to improve, um-
Graduation, graduation-
No, not, not even, it, it's more general that, it was like, you know, uh, provide a, an appropriate education for, uh, students. I saw that in, in the present day that. Yeah, so. And it might be, which I just thought, it might be, um, a board, a board goal for this year to have a workshop done by NISBA for us. Like last year, we had a retreat. And then maybe this, this coming year, we have a, this whole session specifically on, um, setting goals, which they have a staff that does that. There's two guys that, that talk in the webinar, so.
How much would that cost, Doug?
Well, we'd have to look, I don't know. I don't know. I mean, online, the webinar is free, right?
We can look into it.
Yeah. Except it's a little more difficult to ask questions that have an answer, you gotta type them in and then they answer them and, in that webinar, don't, don't, keep going because the question answers are very, uh, enlightening, by the way. So.
I guess my question is, how do we go about setting up a workshop meeting to do that? Do we have to like pool dates or something when, you know, we-
We'd have to figure out when, when we could do it, yes.
Have something like that set up?
Yeah. It would be, um, based on what I saw in the webinar, it'd be a single meeting. And it would probably be two hours or three hours at the most. When we had the, you know, last year's retreat, uh, which was nice, it was with Capolas and, uh, we had a specific topic that, that we were, we were talking about was finance. And, uh, that, I thought, I thought that was productive, so, um, but that was more in-house and that didn't cost us much. But I, I, we would have to find, I guess that you could find out, you know, what it would cost.
Well, I guess, yeah, I mean, I don't know if we need to do a formal workshop or, or some kind of a retreat. I don't, I'm not sure. I mean, I just have to look at the-
If we all look at the, the webinar and use, and, I mean, the slides are printable, you can print them out. I mean, we could have our own and, and it's up to you guys, you know, what, what you wanna do. You may get a little bit more, um, education on how to create SMART goals and those kinds of things that, we know the acronym, what it is, but I'm not sure if we actually do SMART goals here.
I think it's worth reaching out to NISBA and find out what they have. I'm, I'm sure that they have a training, um-
They do, they have two guys, that's what they do.
Right. You know, if, if we could get just an outline of, of what they do and, and the costs associated with it and what it takes to, to put it in place, I think it's at least worth getting that information before we decide whether to, you know, to do it ourselves or, or have them come in.
Okay.
Thanks, Doug.
Which has to be in public, the-
Goal setting.
The goal setting, yeah, yeah.
But not a workshop on goals. You can have a workshop to learn about how to set goals and then set the goals in public.
That they, yes, the goal setting has to be in-
The goal setting's in public, but they can, you can actually have a workshop to guide you through that. So even if you set some goals this year and, and we do the workshop in December, it will set you up for the next year. So you, you don't necess- cause you're not too, too far off, but it, you know, so we could- Yeah, yeah, exactly. Might even be worth asking, we, you know, since, uh, training through our attorneys, we, we are allotted a certain amount of training through the attorneys that you hire every year. Uh, that might be something that they would be willing to do, um, through their retainer.
So, they would actually contract with NISBA or they would do the training?
They might be, they, they might.
Yeah.
It's worth asking, anyway, as another alternative.
So, given that, then I am gonna recommend that we not go through these and find out. I, I'd rather spend time getting it, uh, what the process should be and get it and do it and then set the goals rather than muddle our way through and just repeat ourselves a lot.
I agree with that. Yeah.
All right, so let's, let's move on from this. And I think it'd be much more productive once we, you know, learn, education is a good thing, right? All right. Well, that will considerably shorten the meeting, so that's-
Linda, if you need help, we can ask Perry.
Is that why, wait a minute, wait, wait.
You got it, Linda? So, can we, I, I'm pretty good at that, too. If not, we'll call on Perry.
It's, it's warm in here.
I think I hear, yeah.
Our energy people cutting everything off.
Okay. So that will bring us to, uh, a probably short discussion on the potential for changing the October thirteenth board meeting to a different night. And so that's the night that, uh, three of our district, uh, people and one board member are receiving an, an award, uh, an award from the Mid-Hudson Study Council. So, um, I hate to make recommendations cause I'm retired and I can go any, it doesn't matter.
Well, Debbie and I also came up with three, cause we definitely need the district clerk there, too. So, do you wanna, do you want us to rattle off a few dates?
Sure. I was gonna suggest the Wednesday or Tuesday in front of that.
Well, the, the Tuesday, the 11th, and, um, uh, school is in session. It is rush ashana, we have canceled evening, um, activities for students. Yom Kippur, sorry, Yom Kippur. But that does not prevent the board from making a decision to meet that evening. There's Monday, the 17th. Uh, Wednesday, school is closed for Yom Kippur.
Yeah, I think-
The twel- the 12th.
Personally, I would rather avoid those days that are religious.
Yeah, to me, the 17th is better.
Seventeenth, yeah.
Monday, that's a Monday, yeah.
Yeah.
Is there anybody that can't come that Monday?
Okay.
Do we have to make a motion to change it?
We'll get a, we'll have to get one, the tech to cover the filming.
Okay. So, can I have a motion to move the October 13th board meeting from October 13th, Thursday, October 13th to Monday, October 17th, please?
Some moved, second.
Any discussion, any other discussion on that? All in favor? Opposed, thanks, that was easy, good. So, it brings us to consent agenda. May I have a motion, uh, for 10.1, action on the consent agenda, please?
Some moved, second.
Is there any discussion on that? We had one retirement.
I can look that up, but we also have two people in the audience who are being appointed tonight. And I'd like to introduce them. We have Andrew Run, uh, Spanish teacher. Andrew, give a big wave, the, the camera's coming around now. And, uh, Andrew is a graduate of FDR, so welcome back and, uh, best of luck.
Theater guy, right? And a theater guy, you were in the musicals, uh, yeah?
Yes.
We spoke this morning, that's right, yeah, okay.
So, we're, we're looking forward to a returning student and, um, as in a new capacity. And we look forward to watching your growth over the coming year. We also have with us Dina Serbino. Dina, can you wave hi and, uh, the camera will come now and film you? So, uh, Dina is, uh, being appointed as a, uh, point five reading teacher at Violet Avenue School. Uh, Dina hails from the city and we're, but lives closer, so we are very happy to welcome you to, uh, Hyde Park Central School District, so best of luck. Thank you for coming tonight. It, it shows a lot of dedication already that you, uh, cared enough to come to the board meeting on the night of your appointment, so. We can't say congratulations till they vote.
Okay, wasn't there a custodian, Neil, somebody other than Neville?
Neville, yes, 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 yes. Neville Harvey, uh, has been with us since 1999. And he was, uh, a mechanic in the, uh, transportation department. I looked at this agenda so long ago, I thought this was last, I thought he was on the last one, but yes. Neville will be missed.
Okay. Any other discussion? All in favor? Opposed, thank you.
You're official.
Okay, that brings us down to, I can get down there. Special Ed, I have a motion for 11.1, special education placement, please.
Some moved, second.
Any discussion there?
I have reviewed the pack and recommend its adoption as presented to us.
Thank you, all in favor? Opposed? Thank you very much. And I have a motion for 11.2, agreement for special education services, please.
Some moved, second.
Any discussion on that? All in favor? Opposed, thank you. And I have a motion for 11.3, recertification of lead evaluators. These are the ones that do the evaluation of our staff.
Some moved, second.
Any discussion on that? All in favor? Thank you very much, those people that do that, cause it's not easy. I have a motion for intermunicipal agreement with the town of Hyde Park, 11.4. I have a motion, please.
Some moved, second.
Any discussion?
I, I had a question on the rate involved there for a hundred dollars an hour. I think neighboring towns and maybe even the sheriff's office do that cheaper. Have we ever looked at bidding out to like the sheriff's department instead of paying? I mean, a hundred dollars an hour seems like an awful lot.
We have not looked at bidding that out. Where we were, are, are you familiar with where we were before with this? But with how, what our arrangement was prior to this? So, prior to this, we were contracting through the, actually, not even through the Police Benevolent Association, but we were contracting out with individual police officers for fifty dollars an hour. And they were not working under the auspices of the town of Hyde Park Police. And there was exposure on our end because we were now entering into contracts with people to serve as security for a game, but not under the auspices of the police department because they were contracting separately. So, through, uh, a lot of discussions, we, and, and they approached us at one point because they were also feeling that the Police Benevolent Association, um, wasn't providing any insurance for them, so they were putting themselves out there. We were feeling that we weren't really covered, so we determined that we wanted to have it official, that if we were going to have police provide any police coverage at a game, they were there as members of the police department. So that's the long answer. The short answer is no, we did not look at alternatives, we only looked at our police department. This is-
And there are some good reasons for that, they're familiar with the students, they, um, yeah, and I think Officer Monaco, he does the football game, but anyway, the, it, it, it's also for them, and that's why we wanted to make it official that it was Hyde Park. An area where there's lots of kids, where they can talk to them, where they can get information, they find out what's going on in town, who's doing what, you know, they get a lot of, it, it's beneficial to them. Same as being an SRO, being in the building is beneficial to us, it's also beneficial to the-
I agree with that, it just seemed like the, the hundred dollars was, was, was high, so I, I checked and the neighboring town should do it for the same thing, but their police department for fifty.
Wow.
So, just-
Well, we can-
Something to look at.
You know, this was our first endeavor in this and, um, we will need to negotiate again for basketball season, so maybe if we do a little research as to what other towns are paying, we were, um, we were paying fifty, but they said, well, if we're going to hire these people to do this, then it adds to benefits. But, um, we can certainly go back at it with the next season.
And it may be that it is a hundred dollars, but I think that would challenge that.
Yeah, probably the benefits of that.
Could I say something, too? It's also the overtime rate.
Oh, the overtime rate, yeah.
Yeah, it would be the overtime rate plus the benefits. And they gave us an average of the, um, police officers that would be working the games.
But it's certainly worth looking into. Thanks for bringing that up.
Linda, why are their benefits included? Are they doing this during their regular workday or?
Well, there's, um, we, based on how much they work, the, when I say benefits, that's also their fight, their social security, Medicare, that's based on what they're paid.
Oh, yeah, that part.
And also, um, their pension, too, their pension costs.
All right. So anything based, anything based on the accumulated salary for the year?
Yeah, they're not charging us for health insurance.
Yeah, all right.
Because they're receiving that, anyway.
And, just to be clear, we only have those officers, that number of officers that we request. They don't just show up.
Right, right, yes.
I, I guess I was under the impression that this was for the whole year because it talked about, um, the rate change at the beginning of the next year. So my question initially was, why are we only talking about the varsity football games? Why aren't we talking about all of our events that we would need security at?
Right. That's a good question, too, because I thought when we, we, if you remember, we had to sign a waiver because the town of Hyde Park has the same attorneys that we do, so we signed a waiver. I thought we were clear that what we wanted to set up was a template for being able to access these officers and that we would send in by season how many we needed. And then I was told, well, uh, this is just for the football because the way the contract wording somehow is linked to the number of people and the number of times. So, where I left it with the attorney was that when we revisit it for the winter sports, for basketball season, we can look at setting it up that way. But right now, this one will only get us through football. So, we have to look at it again, anyway. Uh, we can certainly, um, find out a little bit more about their cost structure versus what's available with other towns, um, and ask all those questions. But since we have to go at it again, that's what I thought, Denise. I thought we were just going to be able to have the one contract, it would last us the whole year, and we'd be able to say, okay, here's football season, here's basketball season, here's graduation, and-
And homecoming dance, right? I was, I was more talking about like just anything that we would require them. Like, I don't know how feasible that is. But I mean, we also require security at the homecoming dance, don't we?
Yes, but I think that's a different mechanism. I'll check on the homecoming dance.
Okay, yeah, and I don't know, I mean, if there's other things. I mean, that was my thought, that was what I was thinking about. I mean, I understand the, the different seasons, um, so I-
And some-
To be thought about and to be discussed.
So, and part of that, too, Denise, is there are times when we ask our SROs as an SRO to do overtime. And that's different than this whole, you know, so there are times when we ask our SROs to be there as an SRO. And then they get overtime as an SRO and not to exceed X amount. Our co- so I know it's getting more complicated as we peel back the layers. So we have an annual contract with the student resource officers and they cover X amount. The extra coverage at games and graduations, we have handled through this, so. I'll try and provide a little more clarity and we'll, and we, since we have to go back at it, we'll, uh, we'll take a look at this and, and maybe a contract that makes a little more sense and-
Well, that helps, that, thank you.
You're welcome.
I didn't realize the difference between the SRO and this.
Yeah, you're welcome.
All right, any other, any other discussion? All those in favor? Opposed, thank you. Brings us back to public participation. May I have a motion to enter public participation, please?
Some moved, second.
Any discussion on that? All in favor? Opposed? Would anybody like to address the board, please? Step to the mic. Wow, you're gonna do good. All right. I have a motion to close public participation.
Some moved, second.
Any discussion there? All in favor? Opposed, thank you. There are no other board matters necessary. I don't think we've had any board subcommittee meetings since the last meeting. So, upcoming meetings would be-
It's technology next week.
Come, it's not there.
Do we get invited?
Yeah. Okay.
Should've seen, yeah, you should've seen a note from-
Twenty-second is the next meeting.
If you're on that committee.
I wonder if Rick might have not gotten the updated committee members, cause I get invitations and I'm no longer on the committee.
Okay, so we'll work-
I think I'm on technology, okay, signed up for that.
We'll, uh-
Just sent an email to Rick Word.
Um, and you know what, we'll work with Rick, too, because what we like to do with board subcommittees is make sure Debbie's in the loop because then she'll send out the reminders and the notifications and so then it's centralized and, uh-
Yeah, there is an audit committee meeting scheduled for the 19th.
Twenty-nine.
Twenty-ninth.
Energy committee meeting.
Which is after the next board meeting.
Yeah, which is after the next board meeting, right? All right. There is no need for another executive session.
You sure?
Are you disappointed?
Broken-hearted.
So, um, may I have a motion to adjourn, please?
Some moved, second.
Any discussion on that? All in favor? Opposed, thank you very much, gentlemen, ladies. We're done.
Okay.